Welcome. I think we're here sitting.
Well, all right.
We had that in podium.
But we do, but not quite. Yeah, there you go.
All right, meeting call to order today is Tuesday, May 2nd. It is now 7:12 PM. Town Council meeting, Town Council Chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Wallbrook, Rhode Island.
Roll call. Councilman Lachardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Borje?
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
Form is declared. Consent agenda approval of the minutes from the April 25th, 2023 regular town council meeting.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second. One second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Eyes have it.
Ordinances. First reading of ordinance 2023-12 amending Article 3, Section 18 of the Westwood zoning ordinance and zoning map, rezoning assessors plat 15 lots 496 and 18 from R 7.5 to be business.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Second. Mr. Chairman, Tom Scroden, Noel Bernero, Cronin, Frog, 1070 Main Street, Coventry Island for the applicant. This matter was before the council on March 21st for introduction and recommendation of planning. The planning board did hear it on Monday, May 3rd and voted to recommend the change to the council. As a result, it's been advertised three times in the Cant County Daily Times and notice has been mailed to the abutters. An affidavit of that notice has been provided. Sorry to start off with the dry stuff, but I gotta say. So the property's Rocksmark, right? No, uh, no introduction really needed. Corner of Legris Avenue and Main Street. It's about 1.4 acres total, but it's made up of three lots of record. Lot 179, lot 18, and lot 496. Lot 179 is the right-hand side of the building. If you're looking at it from Main Street, it's own business. It's not why we're here tonight. Well, it's half of why we're here tonight, but to make it easy for you, it's the old produce time. Okay, so right behind that is, uh, lot 496, which is a tiny little lot, 1,750 square feet, zoned R 7.5. Uh, if you're looking at the building, again, on the left side, the meat side, right, the grocery side, the, uh, that is zoned R 7.5 as well. While we were at, um, planning, Solicitor DeFiori reminded the planning board that when the market started, it started there and the folks who started it lived upstairs from the market. And he, it's his recollection that that's how we ended up with this split zoning. So we have a little bit of a problem as, as you guys are aware, Rocksmark has closed at that location. The Rock family is trying to market that property and the, um, interested parties are running into this question of what they can use it for. Marilyn Schellman, the current planner, indicated that she's been approached by several people, been, you know, turned off by the fact that, uh, there's this uncertainty. So before the council here tonight, in an attempt to unify the zoning of this property as business, so, um, the 103 Legris Avenue, which is owned, R 7.5 is about 36,933 square feet and it has about 11,709 square feet of the single building on it. So we're looking to, uh, change that, the zoning of that piece in the adjacent 1,750 square feet to business. The, um, there's a little piece that has come into question, uh, both before this council and at the planning board that goes directly east. Yeah, east from the back of the building to Center Street. Doesn't look like it belongs to this property in any way, but it does. It's unified with 103 Legris in one single piece. But it runs from the back of the market to Center Street. It's currently used by those two apartment buildings that are behind there as parking. I've been in discussion with those folks about maybe granting an easement because there's a 10-foot, well, it's over my head by a lot, um, wall and fence separating that. But we can't deed out the property because there's a utility line in it, we believe. So we're gonna work on an easement so that the folks who are parking on it, on those two apartment buildings on Center Street, they can stay parking off the street and it won't interfere with the potential uses of the property. So other than that, the businesses adjacent, um, the properties adjacent to this Rocksmark are zoned business with the exception of the mill across the street, which is zoned, uh, commercial and the two houses on Center Street. So I believe that, um, you have the recommendation from the, uh, planning board in, uh, the information provided to you tonight. And I'll answer any questions that you might have, but, uh, everyone is very familiar with the property, probably knows slightly more than I do about it. So, uh, as, as you know, which side the produce used to be on, kind of thing.
Just want the record to reflect that the meaning to place on April 3rd.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. My apologies.
That'd be a good trick. Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Any questions on this matter?
I don't have any questions. I just, with it being like this, it just, I don't know how a bank ended up being in the residential area. So does that have that giant ATM machine in the residential spots? I just don't know how that happened if it's residential.
Love to take credit for that, you know, trick, but it wasn't me.
I, I just don't understand that. I think it makes perfect sense to change the whole thing to business, so.
So nothing really changes except the zoning as far as businesses have been in there, business is gonna go back in there. It's just, just a formality on our, for the most part.
It's consolidating all the.
And there's no issue with that crazy piece that goes out to Center Street being business? And you're saying you can't bifurcate it anyway, so?
No, there's no, no problem with the owners of those properties. The, uh, I spoke with attorney Steven Litwin about it, uh, who, um, represents Jeff Butler, who's the owner of the property. He, he was very concerned mostly, uh, about losing the parking for his tenants. I mean, the Center Street's not that wide, so.
Right.
Yeah. So we've begun the process of trying to work that out.
Okay.
So there's no way if a business goes in there that they, 'cause I'm looking at the map right now. If you, if you say it's an easement, that that business could say, all right, we're gonna use that now. We need that. Look at it as a cut through.
So we're, we're gonna take care of that before we sell the property. That's correct.
Okay.
Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Oh, I usually go first.
Mark? Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
That's Jason and that's Jay.
April 20?
Nope, you're going back with us.
May 23rd, we have a meeting.
Second reading of ordinance 2023-14 amending Chapter 5, Article 2, Fences, Section 5-348.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Move a second. Any discussion on this? I know, um, Jay and Mark, you weren't here. Just a brief, um, synopsis of this, what happened last meeting. We have residents, we have businesses that have eight-foot fences or wanna put eight-foot fences up. And one is, uh, the La Croix for the condos down on, um, same that street.
Blossom.
Blossom Street.
Yes.
Um, and they wanted to put an eight-foot white, yeah. They wanted to put a white, um, fence up eight feet for privacy for the residents. And they were kind of told they could not.
Ordinance actually said six feet.
Six feet.
No way to, no way to, before anybody to, to change that, which is kind of crazy, because we know that's not really what happens in practice either, so.
And Mary Beth also had another resident who has an eight-foot picket fence on, in their property that they were told they had to take it down. And again, it's for their privacy due to illness and whatever else. They still have to follow the rules. As when they get down to the end of the road, it starts to be three feet, still that part, just in between. And ironically, I brought up, there's many fences, you know, I went to a few properties over that week, many fences that are eight feet. And, you know, we kind of approved them. So I, I, I don't think, you know, and another question that was brought up was, we're looking at one fence that's eight feet, but in the same yard, on the other boundary, they got 20-foot arborvitus. So what's the difference between an arborvitus that's blocking the view in the fence? So, um, again, that's why we supported this and why it was put on the agenda.
I think it was also brought up last week, if I remember right, it's like a six-foot fence on a four-foot wall, you know?
My property.
Yeah.
I have a four-foot fence on an eight-foot wall and my neighbor would like to see the six-foot, because his grandkids play soccer often anyway and they send the ball over. But, um, but again, they, they definitely like the, the higher fence and, you know, not that I'm gonna put one up right away, but when that one goes, maybe.
The other thing that this ordinance does is it does not make the applicant go before zoning. It can be done administratively with planning and the building official, until there's no more.
And if it didn't, I go, they still have a, uh, an avenue for.
I guess I.
That's, that's the big thing is, because obviously somebody would claim it because of who I am and I'm not getting allowed to do it when so and so has got to do it. As long as there's an avenue on both sides for people to bring something forward, it, I, I think it's a good ordinance.
Any public comment on this ordinance? That's just great.
I'm kidding.
All right, roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason? Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Business licenses, brought, uh, request from Brawl for it all for approval of event date change to October 8th, 2023.
Move the request.
Second. Move and seconded. Any discussion?
Just my usual. Don't agree with the alcohol being served.
Any public comment on Brawl for it all? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Read it to.
Um, request from the Portuguese American Citizens Club for an amplifier, loudspeaker, and dance live band license for events to be held May 26th and 27th at 97 East Main Street.
Move approval of request.
Second. Move and second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
New business, approval of wording to be placed on the ballot for the all-day vote on the fiscal year 2024 budget to be held on May 18th, 2023.
Yeah, we didn't see the wording. It wasn't attached.
Yeah.
No. There's no link to it on the agenda.
It's really odd. I'm so sorry. Yes, your problem. Is that the only thing that?
Yes.
Want me to go make copies so we can look at it?
Yes.
I assume the numbers have been checked and you're all.
Somebody wants to read it aloud so we don't, for the public.
Subject, wording to be used on the May 18th, 2023 ballot for the all-day vote on the fiscal year 2024 town budget. Resolved, the town council hereby adopts the following wording to be placed on the ballot for the all-day vote, uh, on the fiscal year 2024 town budget on May 18th, 2023. Annual town budget, in quotes, shall the annual town budget for the town of Westwood be passed in the total amount of 112,465,675 dollars for the fiscal year 2024, unquote.
Any questions or concerns from the council? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
It looks like there's a couple attachments missing and I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Well, that's, uh, we didn't make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to move the approval of the wording on the FY 2024 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next resolution isn't attached either.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I wish, um, I.
I think actually.
You did have it in the.
It's in the packet.
Because that's the same thing I sent a clerk base to go on the website.
It is in the packet.
Okay. I'm like, I thought this was in my mind here. I apologize.
Got the trade one.
If, if it's over that, then we're in trouble. Yeah, because we're all gone.
One mistake and all of the, over the, plus the year, plus that she's been here. I think we can. It's not even her mistake.
It doesn't have to be her mistakes, but in the packet that she sent.
Right.
She, that Sarah sent, yes.
I mean, it's not her fault.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move and second. And Mark?
So, so this is a joint under new business for an update as well as the resolution. So I'll blend the resolution into the update. Obviously, we're in the construction season, um, so this is a very exciting time. As you all recall, last year, we applied for, um, and submitted plans for a $500,000 project at the Crumpin Playground. And fortunately, we were selected by the Department of Environmental Management to receive that 2022 Rhode Island Recreation Acquisition and Development Grant, the amount of $400,000, which is the maximum. Our share in either cash or in-kind work amounts to 20% of what we end up spending. So we anticipate, obviously, doing a, a, a nice project there, rehabilitation and upgrades to that park. So we anticipate using the full amount. So we'd need to supply $100,000 of either in-kind labor and/or cash. So the resolution before you is for $80,000, requesting to encumber $80,000 of American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, because I think at the very least, we'll do 20,000, if not more, in in-kind, in-house labor. We'll obviously try to maximize that amount, so the eventual encumbrance of American Rescue Plan funds can be kept to the minimum because we have plenty of other needs in town that we'd like to use. Um, so that's the resolution. But just as far as other upgrades, you, you'll recall that, um, we had, several of us had met last early fall to put this application together. And I think we were all very pleased, um, with the outcome and the submission, obviously. DEM, um, believe so too, and awarded that. Um, so Kevin Alveson had, would helped us with that conceptual design. Um, continues to be a good partner in this project and kicking it off. And he'll assist me with the project management, um, going forward. We're all on the same page. We plan on having a planning meeting with, um, within the next couple of weeks that'll involve, um, Councilman Lachardi, myself, Marilyn. Um, our DPW representatives, um, will offer an invitation to a member of the Recreation Committee to join us to get on the same page on, on where we're going. And obviously, once the funding is hopefully approved, um, we have access to the DEM money on a as invoice basis. Um, hopefully, we can get into the supply chain and get things kicked off and have some significant progress, um, this year. If not completed, would be ideal. So the resolution again is to encumber up to $80,000 for this project.
And when does it have to be sent by? I'm sorry. Not that, not ARPA, but for the, this playground. There must be a deadline.
So I, I just.
Sorry.
The grant period is started August of last year through June 30th of 2025.
2025, okay.
Obviously, ARPA funds need to be encumbered by the end of '24.
Right.
And spent by the end of '26, which hopefully will be long done. And hopefully, we'll have money left over that we can put back into the ARPA part for other needs. I'm all for it. It's related. It is. It's 1721. There's been a lot of questions regarding recreation, so. What can, because we may be able to use that for this playground. So what, what does that money go towards? It's my understanding, I think, Kristen, we'll back it up. I think we can use 1721 money for purchasing of open space and recreation. In this particular project, American Rescue Plan funds, oh, actually, we can use American Rescue Plans funds for essentially anything except for four or five specifically named items in the, the federal regs that we can't use it for. You know, 1721 money could be a good option or an excellent option, obviously, for recreation. But I, I, speaking to the DPW folks, I believe there's gonna be something forwarded to the Recreation Committee, some plans for Flat Top Pond. So instead of hitting ARPA for that, or maybe a combination of ARPA, American Rescue Plan funds, this, this is a proposal out there that we just received within the last couple of days, uh, which is a little more expensive than I anticipated, but essentially, everything is these days. That perhaps we can do a combination towards that at the time.
Any other questions?
What about, uh, it's pretty expensive, Zapport the bid, or is it something that?
Which, Flat Top?
No.
The items within this project will have to follow procurement rules when we go to buy, who, any, you know, the services of a vendor to do the actual construction, the purchasing of the playground equipment, unless it's on a, somebody on an MPA. The quotes that we have are part of that consortium that you referenced out of Massachusetts so far. Some of the preliminary numbers that we have that helped us formulate the original conceptual design. But we need to follow all the procurement guidelines within our, while spending that money.
My ask is because my, my email wasn't opening up, so I couldn't get to the resolution. And as soon as I asked a question, it was open. So now, maybe I'll get down to the resolution. I can see what actually says. Um, so, thank you.
Not specifically for in-kind to offset our in-kind, but obviously, the, some, there's gonna be overlap geographically to fix, um, some drainage in that area directly behind the park. So we can do that, but the CDBG money is earmarked for that. I believe it's, Elaine reported that it also encompasses some paving of fountain in Pennsylvania in that similar neighborhood. So we'll, once we have our RFP that goes out for road paving this season, we'll figure out what the projected cost is between drainage and paving and get that project done.
Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Right, update on the ice chiller replacement project.
Yeah, and this is just an update on, on where I believe we stand and where we're going. So essentially, we're gonna put out a new request for proposal. Um, we've engaged our town engineer, Jeremy and Associates, and his mechanical engineer to help us do the draft of what the specific needs are. So since this is such a significant investment in our town and, uh, also a revenue generator, um, you know, and on my, for my part, this is kind of a lesson learned. Obviously, sometimes you need the experts and you need to spend some money when the investment is so significant. So we've engaged Jeremy and Associates, our, our contracted engineer, um, and his mechanical engineer will work with us and consultants to make sure we're putting the right specs out there. Um, they will also assist with the design and bidding inquiries. Once the RFP goes out, if somebody has a question, to make sure they get the quality answer and it goes out to all potential bidders. And then, once the bids come in, they will help with the assessment of the bids, make sure we're comparing apples to apples, answer any questions, do any research, and then be available to make sure that specifications required actually happen during installation. And initially, that funding will come from the line item within the Civic Center budget, which was originally designated or anticipated to be some type of, you know, lease payment or contribution towards the ice chiller in this fiscal year. Um, and then, once we, assuming we approve, you folks approve an RFP and a project going forward, and we identify the funding source, whether it's American Rescue Plan, a lease, a comp, uh, grants or a combination of all those options, we'll figure out the engineering fees, whatever balance is left into that proposal. So I just want to keep you up to date. Hopefully, we'll have an RFP out shortly. You know, I think, obviously, these things take a significant amount of time and, you know, again, a lesson learned, if you want it done right, sometimes you need to take a step back with a different lens and, and engage the professionals, because it's much bigger than me.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you for the update, Mark.
Resolution authorizing the Solid Waste and Recycling Service Agreement with the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation for a term of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move and second, Mark.
I sent the 68-page, uh, agreement. It's a, it's a wonderful read, um, but it's the standard that all municipalities are presented that we need to return to them, um, by the middle of June. So this sadly is a formality to acknowledge their increasing rates like everything else and engage the agreement with Rhode Island Resource Recovery from July of this year through June 30th of 2025.
So one question I did have is, are those fees, and some of them are ridiculous, that number of fees or the things that are discussed in the 68 pages, are they the same for every community?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is standard, because it does say West Wallbrook on it. And so I just want to make sure that this.
This is the standard agreement that everybody has.
Sludge and whether we could have, we could have tweaked something in.
There are obviously some offsets. If we participate in certain programs, we are recycling is, you know, our percentages are within certain range. We'll get some offsets, but the, the actual tipping fees are standard.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Discussion of Deerfield Wall is requested by Councilman Borje.
So we talked about this last year. Um, Dave actually had a picture that was sent to him and the wall is far worse now than it was even six, eight months ago, whenever that was. I bring it up because it, something needs to be done. I don't know how or why this wall would be on private property. The homeowner had no knowledge when she bought the home that it was her property. A big hole that is now in there, I do believe, was from that one company, but we can't prove it, so there's nothing that we can do about that. The wall's disgusting. And I stopped by today to take some pictures. I've sent out to the council, if anybody wants to see a picture of it. Mark drives by on a regular basis. I know Jade goes by it. I don't know how much Mary Beth or.
I go by. It's awful. Yeah, I saw it the other day. Yeah, I see it.
That's right, because you have to go that way for work now. I, i- it's horrible. And when I was out there taking a picture, say, this lady comes out of her house and she's like, are you here to fix the wall? I was like, no, I'm here to try and get the wall fixed. Um, I, so I explained who I was and she's, uh, she's been living there for a long time. She remembers when that whole plat was built. And she says she believes it's an HOA. I don't know if there is. I don't know if there's any way to research that.
Who's, who's getting the money? There is.
I know. Or did it just get defunct? But we, I mean, I don't understand, like, how, how all that would work, but.
Is there, there's, there's nature?
That's what she said.
Did she pay something?
I, I, no, she's not part of it. She's actually on East Granite Avenue, so she's not part of that. Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, so I don't know. There's, some people live over there, do, uh, you can come up.
State your name and address.
Andrew Wallstate, uh, Wendy Way. Uh, we, we live down off Deerfield and, uh, there's no HOAs. There's, there's nothing that we pay into. There's no committee for that area.
Well, I'm just wondering if there ever was one. That's why I brought up to see, because, I mean, if there was one, I, I don't know how we, they, they, they don't just go, they don't just go defunct, right? I mean, you can't just ignore them and they go away.
David?
I'll, I'll just.
Yeah. I, uh, I, I believe that plat was built by Josretz. I represented Josretz and I don't recall anything he ever built having an HOA.
Okay. I only bring it up and I'm glad you're on there, too. I was hoping you'd be here so I can ask that question to you. So thank you for answering.
So this is.
Yeah, that's my record. I, I never drafted one and I represented him and, and all of the, the purchases at that time. Yeah, it's my record, I I never drafted one, and I represented him and and all of the the purchases at that time.
So next question is, who's responsible?
Well, so it's on it's on.
Is there a survey been though? Well, it's it's on private property. That's the problem, it's on private property.
So then the homeowner, well, the question I would have, would it would it be the homeowner's responsibility to take it down? Or repair it?
She doesn't want it down because it acts as a barrier for somebody driving up across and into our house.
Well, that's.
Oh, so she wants the wall there itself.
Something there, she doesn't care what we do, she's I mean, she's completely on board, she's a nice lady.
The other side look like.
She has her gardens all in there and everything else, and so it 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 she takes, yeah, it's just the outside of it, it's really bad, so. So um I just don't know what we can do with this. The hole now. The other side is it it looks like the rest of it, it's all great.
Clarify, you said the it's owned by the person that abuts that?
That wall is apparently on her property, and she did not know when that when she bought the house. And there was a wall, identical wall right across the street. But that was on town property, so the town just went and ripped it down.
She's been there a long time, I think.
She's been there for, I would say, about four years, five years.
And how long has this been? Was it about two? It's been like about a couple of years that it's looked like that?
Only a little over a year now since the hole's been there?
Well, I could tell you in a second, tell you when I got the first message.
Hi, I'm Amanda Kowalski, I'm fifty seven. So I've talked to a couple of people in the neighborhood about that um that issue, it happened last year when the the state was clowning. So Marie, that's who lives there, um Marie doesn't know what to do about it. Because she's obviously, she doesn't want to pay for it. Um we have everybody, I I actually originally heard it. Um in a town council meeting, I watched online that you guys were thinking about tearing down the wall, and I will say that um. I don't know how it's going to go because it is on private property, but nobody in our area wants it um torn down. So um I just wanted to say that. Um if we could get it repaired, that's great, but I know that like it's been kind of quoted, I guess, before. And it was extremely expensive to have it repaired, um so.
About fifteen thousand.
Yeah, which seems kind of crazy to me because it I mean, it it honestly, I mean. It's not a structural wall, I don't think it's just there to separate her.
Right, but if you look at the whole wall, the whole wall either needs to be refurbished.
Yeah.
Which the person who went out there and looked at it told me it'd be cheaper to rip it down and put up a new one.
It's outdated, to say the least, it's like, it's stucco, I think, but um. But but we also in that, that's kind of like our gateway into our homes, so we don't. We I think we all um find it important, I actually was talking to a lot of people about like doing a petition, but then there was kind of no reason to do a petition. Because it ended up being on private property, but um I'm kind of like the person in the neighborhood that's talking to everybody about it. So um kind of what I was.
You're the go to person.
Kind of, sort of, but. No, no, I I was just kind of done, I just wanted to kind of.
You'd like to have it, something remain there, is what you're saying.
For sure, something remaining there, um nobody wants to see it torn down, um and.
So because it's on private property, obviously, and I would never even recommend, thank you, Amanda, that we would use tax dollars for it. But I don't know the legalities of like, can I solicit businesses to. Fund it and put their name on a plaque near it or.
First, number one is a survey has to be there to make sure absolutely it's potentially on her property, and how about her own property insurance? If someone else did the damage to her property, if it was a truck or something else that backed in and, you know, if there was no incident report, and nobody knows who. The uh the uh tort fusion would be, she can certainly file a claim on her own insurance.
Yeah, she was afraid to do that because she's afraid her insurance will go up because it's the wall will still be in that same location, it could happen again and type of a thing, so.
So you kind of, I mean, she's hedging her bets, saying that I don't want to, I don't want to make a claim against my insurance company because I don't want my rates to go up. But I want someone else to pay for it, so if you want to have it done privately. That's not going to be a council matter or a governmental matter.
Right, I I understand that, but I am on the council, so that's why I'm asking, is it is it is there any legal thing for me to. Prevent me from going out and soliciting local businesses to possibly do it.
My suggestion would be is you get cleared from the Ethics Commission to make sure you're not going to get jammed up anyway, but if you want to do that. As a private citizen, even though you're an elected official, make sure you get clearance with the Ethics Commission.
Or you can work with Ms. Kowalski in conjunction and work together. I know she's willing.
She's she's very uh soft spoken and reserved too, so.
Protect yourself, because if it appears to that that to anyone, that it's a governmental issue. Again, much like what happened uh a couple of years ago on Providence Street, you're going to have others come out and say, well, if you did it for them. Even though you're not acting as a town councilman, somebody, you know, that line's going to be very thin, that's why you should get an Ethics Commission.
We definitely know it's private property.
Well, well, that's why I said survey.
I'm going by, I believe it was Al that it's that it said it was playing up, I believe it was Al that said, yeah, it was it's private property. I think it's something I had come up before, or he started researching it when I first, like when I first brought it up, I don't remember.
Again, I can understand why she doesn't want her claims to go up, but the reason you have property insurance to handle things like this. And I I I take it there was no accident report from them?
No, this was, no. When the when the initial initial damage happened, she didn't know it was her property, but she also assumed. That because the company was working there, when she left that morning, there was no hole, and when she came back that afternoon, there was a hole, that that company, being a large Rhode Island company. Would do the right thing and fix the wall. And then, as time went on, it didn't happen, and then she started reaching out, and that's when she found out that.
But did she ever make a claim against the company that she thought did the damage?
No, I I asked Jeff to reach out to that company and because they were doing work on behalf of the town.
And you said that there was.
He said, absolutely not, yeah. Not me.
If it if it's not a town issue and you want to assist the citizen in raising money privately. My suggestion is just get something from the Ethics Commission that allows you to do it, because if it's seen that the town is doing it, even though you're not. You're still a councilman, so just to cover yourself.
Right, that's that's why I put on, I put it on for one, for for that and to also see if there's any brainstorming else that somebody else says, oh, no, you can do it this way. And find a different avenue, it just, it needs to be fixed, because the other thing the lady said today was. People have an impression of West Wallack, and when they drive down this road, that wall reinforces that impression of West Wallack. That was her words. So it's something that has to be done.
No, no, you're up.
The other thing I just wanted to ask you is, who would the survey, would the survey be on to get that, or would it be on the town? It would be on her, even though we, okay, all right, all right.
Well, I guess then the question is, if no survey is done, and the work does get done, and it turns out it is town property.
If she does the survey as the owner of the property, and her survey comes back and says it's on town property, then there's an issue. But if it comes back and says, no, it's on private property, then it's over.
I'll be honest.
Check records though, when when records have that in the clerk's office?
That house, I I believe that house was built, I want to say around nineteen seventy, seventy one, seventy two. So I don't know if the survey that was then is going to be equal to now, so I would, an up to date survey is always the best thing to do.
But shouldn't the deed have points in in?
You would think, but again, deeds from fifty years ago and surveys from.
Could we check, could we check the deed first? That way.
I mean, if it if it comes down to square footage and the um because it's on a bend, I don't know how they're going to do the arc, but if that's all showing. It's her property and there's nothing in front of it except the road, that's going to be. Again, that's up for her to check, that's not up to the government to check.
Yeah, usually from curb, it's five feet past the curb, usually the size of the sidewalk.
So it's up to the homeowner and check that, come in and check.
Yes, and if the homeowner finds a discrepancy, then the homeowner can go have their own survey.
Can anybody check the deed?
Of course.
Sure, it's a public correct. But again, if, I know, I I can't believe with the issue, if you're going to do it. A mark's going to do it, you're going to get yourself in a gym, if somebody says, there's a councilman doing something for a private person on private property, just just to cover yourselves. I know it's the right thing to do, and I don't write the law, but you don't want to get yourself jammed up because you're helping someone, okay?
All right, any other comment on that? Thank you. Jeff, did you have something to say on that or?
Request from the Providence Monthly Meeting for a welcome resolution for the Golden Rule.
Move the resolution.
Discussion?
I was just confused.
Yeah, I read it today, and I didn't I didn't understand what it was.
I don't know what it is either, I have to be honest, I know what the golden rule is, but I.
And I support the golden rule itself.
But I don't get this.
You support nuclear war.
Yeah, that's that's what they're asking you to do, they're asking you to congratulate them.
Again, we're getting a lot of these, I don't know, wouldn't work.
Yes, I agree, and I don't know that we want to sign up.
And I read it, I read it three times today, and I didn't know if I was reading it wrong, I didn't really understand what the serpent was, at least I don't feel like I'm.
You're sending best wishes to an entity that.
Is that the verbiage of it?
And it was somehow lost for many years, but been established in two thousand and nine.
I mean, I I I think most people say that having no nuclear weapons in the world would be a fantastic thing. But they're not going anywhere, it's like saying, you know, get rid of all guns, if, you know, it's not going to happen.
It's way above this council.
Yeah, it's, you know, I I.
I'm going to I'm going to second Councilman Lachardi's, I'm going to pass on. Yeah, so I'm going to all, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to echo his sentiments.
Well, we didn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm I'm not going to put anything for the council.
I would take no action.
Next item.
Upcoming appointments, Suer U Sport Review Appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three year term. Suer U Sport Review Appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three year term. Board of Assessment and Review Appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three year term. And Westwork Housing Authority Appointment or Reappointment for Five Year Term Expiring November twenty twenty seven, public forum.
Any public comment?
I just have a question, especially if Al's still listening. Um the Kowalski's also brought up another issue uh to me the other day.
Wow.
Brought up another issue the other day, they live on Wendy Way, there's a a group home on Wendy Way, and there's parking on both sides of the street. Um it was a an emergency call to the group home and a rescue because the parking on both sides of the street couldn't even get up. To the group homes, they had to walk up, you know, obviously delaying the time they got up to the emergency. They said that there used to be, or they were told by neighbors, there used to be no parking on one side of the street, but somebody went on their own and took all the signs down. Is there any way to research if there was ever no parking on one side of the street?
Should be an ordinance if it was done legally.
Yes. Yes, I can check the uh. The appendix with the for the parking and traffic.
All right, so is that something you you have to do, is it something I can do, is or do you mind doing it, I should say?
It's no, it's it's in the appendix of all of our traffic ordinances. I think it's appendix C, I'm not positive. What what street was it?
Wendy Way.
I'll check in the morning.
Okay, yeah, because if, I mean, if it's already done, I'm just going to ask DPW to put the signs back, and then ask the police department to keep an eye on it. If not, it's going to go to Traffic Commission and have them look at it.
Just state your name and address again.
Andrew Kowalski, Wendy Way. Uh so some of the neighbors got together, they were talking that are impacted by s- street parking. And uh one of the neighbors who lives one house down from the group home. Said that the group home was the ones that removed the signs because uh police would be called for parking on the road, they had nowhere to park.
I guess the clarification would just be that sometimes people make sure that it was signs that the town put up, and it wasn't that maybe somebody at the group home put up at some point, you know. Because it could have been, people put up signs, they don't make it legal, so if it's not, then we'll put it on the Traffic Committee meeting and they'll review it and they could. But again, if if it's an ordinance already, then it's as simple as to Jeff to go put up some signs up there and it'll happen immediately if there's an ordinance already in place.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bert, you can yell from right there. Thank you, Bert. Chief Verone sitting right behind you, smirking with a smile from ear to ear, so.
He's he's happy to hear something like that, and it's it's not the first time we've had that here, so, you know, uh men and women of our safety are very involved. And they they truly care, I know um the same thing, the Tivi family said the same exact thing, unfortunately, he did pass. But the family was very thankful the amount of time that, and I want to bring that up tonight anyway, the amount of time they helped. And tried to get that family through that night, and uh they couldn't thank the men and women who were on scene.
I know.
My neighbor across the street from me says the same thing, because her husband is it's going through some stuff, and they had to do an assist because he fell out of bed, and she said the same thing, so. Kudos to the fire department.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Glad to hear your wife's doing better. Any other public comment? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Opposed, eyes have.